Are we all set? I call this meeting to order. Council has been in declaration to move into open session. Go ahead. We're okay? Council has been meeting since six o'clock this evening and in a closed meeting and I am reporting out of closed meeting. Council reviewed the minutes of the closed session meeting held on June 25th and council reviewed one matter regarding personal matters about an identifiable individual respecting a public appointment to the Owensound Downtown Improvement Area Board of Management and provided further direction to staff. And council reviewed one matter regarding advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege respecting a tenant and tax arrears. And council reviewed one matter regarding labor relations or employees negotiations and personal matters about an identifiable individual respecting compensation review. So now I welcome you all to our Owensound Council open meeting and those at home as well. And I will call for additional business. Counselor Lemon.
Yes, Your Worship, I have one item on gas prices.
Thank you, Peter. Counselor Dodd.
Thank you, Worship, I have two items. One, I would look for an update on a staff delegated site plan and two would be sending condolences to a past committee member.
Thank you. Staff. Clerk's office, nothing, okay. Any disclosure pecuniary interest? Yes, Counselor McManaman.
Thank you, Worship, I'll be declaring pecuniary interest on the deputation from Mr. McDonald on the fire service assessment and also on the Fire Chief's report on the same matter, as I am a employee that's a professional firefighter.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Confirmation of the council minutes. Counselor Dodd.
Thank you, Worship, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Lemon, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on July 9th, 2018, as printed, be adopted.
Thank you. All those in favor? That motion carries. Minutes of the closed session. Counselor Dodd.
Thank you, Worship, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Lemon, that the minutes from the council closed session meeting held on June 25th, 2018, as printed, be adopted.
All those in favor? That motion carries, thank you. We now move into Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Worship, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Lemon, that City Council now move into Committee of the Whole to consider public meetings, deputations and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business.
All those in favor? That motion carries. There are no public meetings tonight. We have a couple deputations. Our first one is Lori Lemon. And she is here, we honor the Fabric Center. Lori?
Thank you. Your Worship Chair and City Counselors. My name is Lori Lemon Yo. My family has the Fabric Center on Ninth Street. I am speaking on behalf of several businesses on Ninth Street, business supporters and our customers. These businesses include Tim Hortons, Pizza Pizza, Sprout, Zong, The New Restaurant, Fulfords, Ginger Press, Coffee Culture, Hawk Shop, Photo Art, Trophies Two, Coats &amp; Best, Dr. Cobbler, Lawson's &amp; Becker's. Those who could not be here tonight send their regrets. Let us first state that we are not opposed to change. We thank you for your financial support in the downtown area and we appreciate the market space. Our issue is with the river plan in its present form, reducing parking for customers in our area. The Ninth Street East area has been a target of parking loss in the past. Parking spots have been removed in front of the Fabric Center, in front of Tim Hortons, alongside of the Crescent Club building, and in front of the former Todd Sporting Goods. I believe eight spots in total. Now, the new river plan has a reduction of seven more parking spots. Six along the river and one on Ninth Street, which is quote "a highly-used area according to the parking review." This leaves only two plus one handicap space for eight businesses and residential visitors in our immediate business area. This is simply inadequate. Suggestions to this issue could involve moving the green space to the market area where there is ample parking, including ten spots on Eighth Street. The plan shows sixty spots with only one loss, and there's lot number nine which is close by. So with replacement of parking spots within green space in the City Hall market area, it would not be as devastating. Or you could reduce the size of the green space to save a few parking spots in our area. As well, we expect increased activity along Ninth Street as a route from east to west, and with the high school drop-off area now only on Ninth Street, this brings higher risk of safety issues that need to be addressed. According to the plan, Eighth Street has two pedestrian crossings, but Ninth Street does not have any. This is an issue I raised along with the parking to counselors who met with me for a visual of the situation, and thank you to those counselors. I also met with some city staff. Thank you for your time and Pam, thank you for your quick email responses. We tried to work through the parking issue and find alternate solutions. Unfortunately, confirmation of the details to possibly regain parking spots just could not be confirmed at this time. So it brings us back to the loss of seven parking spaces, leaving two regular parking spots, which does not quote "maintain or grow" this downtown business area. I have a petition I'd like to present with numerous signatures of business owners, supporters, and customers to emphasize the loss of parking for this area is a valid issue of concern. In closing, we are all working towards the same goal, a vital downtown that's safe, functional, accessible for customers, and a place where people want to live. We, the downtown business, people along Ninth Street and our supporters, urge and plead for a counselor to introduce a notice of motion to rescind the river plan decision so details such as those mentioned can be addressed before the plan moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lori. If you want to bring that petition up to the clerk.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Wright. I did have the opportunity to meet with Lori. Thanks for the meeting there Lori on the weekend. We agreed with a little bit, disagreed with others. I explained to her that I deal with the Royal Bank, with my business, I have to go there two to three times a week. In order to get a parking spot on Main Street to go to the Royal Bank, I always do laps in a clockwise fashion until I can get a parking spot on Main Street. Since Lori was at council the last time, I went the other way, just for, just to see what it would be like. And every time I've gone to the bank going the other way, I have got a parking spot in front of the Fabric Center and walked across to the bank. Now Lori says that's a complete accident, but that's what I did try. After I talked with Lori, I went to do my own little survey on Main Street between Eighth and Ninth Street. And I counted parking spaces on each side of the street and I counted stores on each side of the street. So on Main Street between Eighth and Ninth, on the east side, there's thirteen stores, fourteen spaces, plus two accessibility spaces. On the other side of the street, there's twelve stores and there's fifteen spaces. So I'm trying to make it work for over on the Fabric Center on Ninth Street, and I counted four businesses. And to disagree with Lori a little bit, I didn't use Pizza Pizza because they front onto Main Street. I used the four businesses west of Pizza Pizza. And so right now they have three spaces. They're going to lose one with the downtown river precinct. And if they got three more in front of the Sidnum, that would give her a better average for parking in front of her store than everyone else on Main Street between Eighth and Ninth Street. The problem with our conversation is she didn't have confirmation that when the Sidnum construction is finished, that those three spots were going to be available. So I'll begin by putting a motion on the floor right now that we will make sure that those three spaces in front of the Sidnum will go back to regular parking spaces when the construction is finished. I don't see any need for there to be a drop-off or pickup in front of the, it's a residential building. There's a delivery space down the street. If there's deliveries to be made in front of the Sidnum and there's not a parking spot, a Pure later truck or a FedEx truck can pull up in front of whatever, just the same as they do on Main Street to make their delivery. So hopefully that will make Lori feel better, so that'll give her five parking spaces with one delivery spot and an accessibility spot right across the street that's in front of Tim Hortons.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Counselor Thomas.
I guess my first question would be the Director of Community Services, whether we can in fact even make that motion, given the fact the Sidnum has a site plan, and I know we've had some discussions about that.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Wright. The approved site plan for the Sidnum does show the three spaces being reinstated, and I did share with Ms. Lemon Yo, the city's security and agreements that we have in place to ensure that those spaces are reinstated. What I wasn't able to say to her, would those be regular on-street two-hour parking spaces or would they be a mix of regular spaces and loading and unloading? And I think, I think what I'm able to tell you tonight is the three spaces would be reinstated, you know, part and parcel of that development being finished. The clerk may be able to tell you, I think it would take an amendment to the streets, bylaw or simply direction from council that those spaces be reinstated as regular on-street parking spaces.
Madam Clerk.
I don't know if, what the bylaw says for that specific area, so I would suggest a notice of motion might be appropriate.
Okay. Brian, you bring notice of motion today, tonight to this, to that effect.
I can do that. And just to follow up, one more thing that I wanted to mention to you Lori. You had mentioned in our conversation that the vast majority of your customers are elderly and I just wanted to mention that it's rather unique that you have a building right next door that has sixty potential customers moving in right next door. They all have their own parking spaces and they can walk to the Fabric Center. So I think that's, that's pretty positive news for you as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lemon.
One of the things that comes to mind, you can get three parking spaces there, but when the year that the Tenth Street Bridge goes down, the traffic's going to be so heavy on that street, I don't know how people are going to be able to park and get back out again. Because we're losing more than half our capacity across the river. There are five lanes on Tenth Street, two on Eighth, two on Ninth, and so we're losing five-ninth of our capacity. So I, I think this is a good idea, but I'm also recognizing there's going to be an extraordinary situation when the Tenth Street Bridge is closed.
Thank you, Counselor Lemon. When that happens, we will, there will be other issues and plans to deal with that. So we, I needed to have a motion to receive the petition. Would someone make that motion? Counselor Lemon? All those in favor? That motion carries, thank you. Yes, Counselor Gray.
Well, I just wanted to thank Lori for coming tonight. Two weeks ago, I went in to see Lori on the Monday before we had the report come forward. And it was expressed to me that you didn't have a whole lot of awareness made to you on this. And I've struggled with that as we've went along. I do understand that for staff of the city, they can only do so much in terms of reaching out. And I do apologize because I see it as part of my job to have reached out to the businesses like yourself to ensure that you were aware of it, like I did that day. And you, and I think, or I would hope that we try to reach out in that fashion, it's a challenge. When some of the other businesses, it was expressed to me by others that day, that as the plan was laid out in a one-way, their concerns had been remedied. But I guess there's two ways you could ask the question. The other way is, are you in favor of the two-way street at all? And from a lot of the merchants' perspective, they weren't. Their concerns were remedied if it was going to be a one-way, but their preference for their business success was a two-way. And I find it unfortunate, some of this came back to me afterwards. I had that sentiment given to me on meeting day. I thought I had the answers. I contacted our clerk afterwards, asking when we'd have a bylaw come forward on that because it gave me an opportunity to vote against the bylaw if it did come forward. The nature of the material, I guess, is such that there's not really a bylaw coming forward in this instance. I guess the hindsight is that I would have liked to report maybe that still identified both options and impact statements from the businesses affected, instead of maybe the guiding, the guiding report that we had that night, which was just a one-way.
Decisions already been made, Counselor Gray.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can we move on now, please? We have the second presentation. We have Andy McDonald is here and KCB Management Consulting read a fire service assessment. Welcome, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Lengthy report that you have handed us.
Well, I'll try to give you a synopsis tonight that isn't quite so lengthy. So to you, Your Worship, members of council, staff, and members of the public, yes, my name is Andy McDonald, consultant with KCB Management Consultants. I was asked to give you a little bit of background on both my, my history and that of our company. I've had forty-one years in the fire service, the first two as a volunteer, starting in a small department, Snell Gomontero, in nineteen seventy-seven, and culminated with a two-year contract in the city of Guelph as a general manager of emergency services with the responsibility for paramedics and fire, and a stint there as a deputy CAO. Along the way, I worked for thirty-five years for the city of Brampton Fire and ended my career there, seven years as chief. KCB Consultants, we do have a background in doing fire service-focused fire review. We, we don't go in and write master plans as a lot of our peers do. We do tackle more focused situations like the issue we were asked to look here, at here in Guelph. I am joined at KCB by former Brampton and Calladen Fire Chief Terry Irwin, who's a colleague with me here tonight, former Toronto Fire Chief Bill Stewart, and former Toronto Fire Executive Officer Sean Pierce. We work together to look at these focused fire reviews. And in Owensound, we were to look, concentrate our efforts on fire suppression. And as you said, Madam Acting Mayor, we have a fifty-six-page report here, plus appendices that, that does just that. It's as concise as we can get with such a complicated issue or issues. And we also had to compress our, our time period somewhat because, in an effort to have things ready for tonight. So I will also try to make the complicated issues as easy to understand as I can tonight in a concise manner. The process for conducting our review involved interviews with a number of stakeholders, mayor, deputy mayor, certainly senior fire staff, the chamber, a group from the Chamber of Commerce, some other citizens, and the Firefighters Association, who were very cooperative and helpful in the review. All were, all certainly helped frame the, the answers and the recommendations that we came up with that we're presenting here for you tonight. We reviewed all standing operating guidelines and department standing orders, policies, house rules, et cetera. We reviewed the response data, more on that later. We conducted a very in-depth comparison to industry standards and guidelines. I think there's about sixteen or seventeen pages here, and then that's as compact as we can make it, that go over that review. And the rest of the time was spent on composing the report that hopefully made it somewhat easy to understand and comprehend. There's twenty recommendations, and I'm, the best way to sum up the review is to go over the recommendations with some background and some information that relate to each of the twenty recommendations. And we're starting with what I would call the big three, that really focus on what we were asked to look here as far as suppression activities and suppression operations, with a look at the, the current staffing levels and options around staffing, and the current delivery models. Owensound is a professional department, strictly professional, no volunteers, not a composite department, and not a volunteer department, and we were to look at options around that. Following that, we have, I believe, fourteen items which we uncovered, the, looking into suppression can't be done in isolation, and the other divisions within fire typically either support suppression or are supported by suppression, and we couldn't look at suppression in isolation without examining fire operations pretty well across the spectrum. And a number of what we called low-hanging fruit, for lack of a better term, recommendations came out of the study of the report, and there's fourteen of them included. And then the final three, and most of them, that fourteen, require certainly staff involvement and staff time, but very little financial consideration. The final three recommendations that we'll get to involve some capital investment and capital purchases. But let's start with the, the big three. So the first recommendation is to create a new combined fire service with the Owensound Fire and Emergency Services and the Intertownship Fire Department under one management team. It sounds like a, an easy suggestion, but it's, it's much more than that. First of all, there would have to be a political will between the Intertownship Fire Board and the city of Owensound. Both firefighter groups are organized. The Intertownship Firefighters, the volunteers, are organized under the umbrella of the UFCW, and the Owensound firefighters are members of the International Association of Firefighters. There are collective agreement issues that would have to be dealt with. But from a service perspective, when you look at Owensound, and I must admit, I didn't know a lot about the Owensound area, I'm sorry to say, although I've certainly grown to like it very much, have been up here over the past several weeks. The situation that you find yourself in geographically with the two fire services actually located within the boundaries of the city of Owensound is, is quite unique. And the fact that the Intertownship Fire Service provides service to, if you include Sidnum on the east, what looks like a giant horseshoe that surrounds the smaller horseshoe of the city of Owensound, and for a number of their calls, actually have to drive right by the Owensound Fire Headquarters on the other side of the sound. It's unique. And if I had been a layperson looking at it from the outside, as, as one of our, the owner of KCB is Carl Kelton, who did join us on this project to provide that outside lens, the obvious, from a business case perspective, you look at it and immediately jump to the conclusion that we should be one service. So I, not being a layperson with forty-one years in the fire industry, took a more in-depth look at it, along with Chief Irwin here, and still landed on the same conclusion. And the report goes into some of the advantages, but just geographically, it would make a lot of sense, instead of working independently in what is certainly the one large geographic area that you work together. There are times today, because of the mutual aid agreement, where they are working together as a unit at, at emergencies, and harmonizing the management team and the training between the two would certainly make that go a lot smoother. There would be advantages to the Intertownship area that's covered on the east side by having the professionals respond to some of those calls and conversely on the other side. We don't suggest in this model in any way that the professional response in the city of Owensound proper would change in any way. That first, from a first response perspective. You have five firefighters responding under the headquarters on Third, and, and that should continue. You have an urban core, you've got an older building stock, you have a concentrated population in that urban core that is served quite well by the professional firefighters. The, the combined service, from a response perspective, would just give you more firefighters to respond on a second and third alarm from, ironically, not to you folks, because you live with it, but from someone on the outside, from another fire service actually located within the city. It's not simple, though. There are training issues. There certainly is, as I said before, you need the political will from both entities to get together under one management team, but being managed together would make sense from a, certainly from an incident command perspective. Right now, the chief and deputy in the city of Owensound are each on call half the time and respond as the incident commander to calls. Having been a fire chief and, and been on call, but not at that level of responsibility to respond as incident commander, they're literally on call half of their lives. If you, we suggest that in a combined fire department, you'll find this in the study, that instead of having a chief and deputy with the township and a chief and deputy in the city, one chief, a deputy that would oversee operations on the, on the professional side, and other deputy that would oversee operations on the volunteer side, I, I would suggest that if they split their time being on call to one-third of the time, not only would it be a better life-work balance for the three of them, but it, it may, and this is a supposition on my part, it may make it easier for you, if the need be, to attract chief officers from outside. Because having been a chief, I would be hard-pressed to want to step into a position when I was only free to do, what a person of that age, and I can say that, would, would want to do half of the time. So that's, that's our first recommendation. It will take work. You need the political will. There are, there are certainly clauses in the collective agreement with professional firefighters on the Owensound side, and you're dealing with the union on the volunteer side, that would have to be together with one goal in mind, and that is to create a combined department. The second recommendation is implementing an automatic aid agreement with the Intertownship Fire Board if you can't create initially a combined department. Right now, in the city of Owensound, five firefighters are on duty under the collective agreement at all times. When there's a need for a second alarm, in other words, when there's a situation that is larger than that first responding crew can handle, the captain has the responsibility and the ability, and, and quite a bit of flexibility there, which, which I applaud, to call in for a second alarm. And that second alarm currently is five professional firefighters that are off-duty, that have a responsibility under the collective agreement to respond in a reasonable amount of time. I'm going to get a little bit more into this later on, but, so they, when they, so they work at, it's a complicated shift schedule, something that I've never seen before, but to make it relatively simple, they work five days on, five off, five nights on, five off, five days on, five off, five nights on, five off. When they're on days, those intervening nights, when they're When they're on days, those intervening nights, when they're coming into work the next day, they're on call. So they're on duty during the day, seven till five, for 10 hours, seven to five. And then when they leave work for 14 hours that night, they're paid to be on call. It's a modest stipend, but they are paid to be on call, and are expected, five of them, to return to duty in the case of a second alarm. So if you take a stretch of five days on duty, and considering that they're on call, the 14 hours after each of those days, they're working five 24-hour time periods when they're either on duty or on call. And then the question becomes, and when they're on call, are they really on duty? That's 120 hours in a row, when you have a responsibility to respond to a fire and don't have any decision, or any flexibility in whether or not you respond. We address in the review whether or not that is a contravention of the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, which states clearly that off-duty hours have to be free from fire department activities, and on-duty thing has yet to be tested. I have concerns that it flies in the face of that. I also have concerns from the firefighter's perspective that this, I know it's been in place for a long time, but how sustainable is it? If they get busier, working all day, go home that night, spend all night at a fire, come back in again, and be expected to work the next day? It's a strain. It also restricts them from living any distance outside the city, or even on the outskirts of the city, because of the need to respond in a reasonable fashion, or at a reasonable amount of time. And the automatic aid agreement with the Intertownship Fire Department is an answer with another way to provide that second alarm response. Instead of having those off-duty firefighters be responsible for responding at times when they've just finished a full shift, and they should be attending perhaps their kid's dance recital or hockey game in Collingwood, they have to stick close to the city. Tough to do. And sustain over a career. An automatic aid agreement is, with the Intertownship Fire Department, still separate from the Township Fire and Emergency Services, but you contract them to dispatch their volunteers when that second alarm is needed. So instead of having the five on-duty firefighters come in on overtime, an agreement for automatic aid, currently, the city of Owen Sound belongs to the Gray County Mutual Aid Agreement, which means if you exhaust all of your available resources, you can ask for mutual aid. They exist across the province. Excellent mutual aid agreement, by the way. It's comprehensive, as well as I've ever seen written. Takes everything into account. But you have to have exhausted, under the mutual aid agreement, you have to have exhausted your resources. With an automatic aid agreement, you don't have to get that far. You don't have to get to the fire and think, oh my goodness, we're not going to be able to handle this, we better call for help. As soon as you get a second alarm, you can ask for automatic aid. So instead of those on-duty, on standby firefighters responding, you have volunteers. Different than a composite department. Talking, we addressed the question of volunteers in the city of Owen Sound in the review. We talk about a composite department in the city of Owen Sound in the review. Very important that, to know that we, it's not that we don't recommend or believe in a composite department. Both Chief Irwin and I, at times in our career, certainly when I was a young firefighter, worked in a composite department. And in Calladon, the chief oversaw a composite department. But starting a composite department where you would have to recruit, train, certify, equip, and have ready to respond in the city of Owen Sound, which between 20 and 30 volunteers, depending on what they did for jobs and their availability to respond, would be a monumental task, and as close to being able to say something is impossible as I can say. Especially now, and I won't get, I could be here all night talking about the new provincial certification around firefighters, but incredibly difficult to do. We really don't have to consider that, I don't believe, here in the city of Owen Sound, because we have a pool of trained, not trained in the same SOGs, and that would be addressed, as I said, with the jointly managed department. You would have to work together to make sure they had the same training and operating and the same guidelines. But a group of firefighters, here, many of whom already live in the city, available to bring in under contract, when you need that second alarm. So if you can't get a combined fire department, get together for the, an automatic aid agreement. I heard mentioned earlier tonight, how, and Madam Mayor, you said that there's going to be a lot of issues to address when the 10th Street Bridge closes down. The working relationship between the Intertownship Fire Department and Owen Sound Fire and Emergency Services is going to be tested and forced to do things differently than you do today when the bridge closes down anyhow, because of the difficulty in emergency response across the river. That just shines a light on the fact that you've already got two stations on either side ready to go, why not find a way to work together? And those are your two options. Number one would be the preferred, number two would be a second choice. The third issue, and it takes up 17 pages in the report, in providing the background information, is the on-duty staffing. And that we were asked to consider whether or not, whether reducing the current on-duty staff that is mandated in the collective agreement from five firefighters down to four. Very important to understand, and a lot of people in the audience may find this difficult to believe, but in the province of Ontario, there are no mandated staffing levels for fire suppression. In fact, there is no law that says you have to provide fire suppression activities. Fire prevention and fire education, absolutely. But under the Act, and it's quoted there, and the Act is actually clearly written in the review, it states that a municipality sets their level of response. And in Ontario, that the group or the responsibility for setting your level of fire suppression response for the citizens falls on you, the members of city council. Now here, it's not like you can just wave a magic wand and change that right now, because it specifies under the collective agreement that you have five firefighters. You set the level. Because there is no mandated level of response required for the city of Owen Sound, we are tasked to examine the difference between five and four, and what that would mean, or whether or not we'd recommend it. We have to look at what's commonly referred to or followed in the fire industry. And there are a number of guidelines. The number one, I would argue, is NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, 1710. Now, the NFPA is an international body. It's centered in the US, but has members from Canada on it. And it sets widely accepted, certainly very, very accepted, standards in everything across the board for fire. And standard 1710, it's a long, big document, it talks about every aspect of fire suppression and response, covers the emergency response. Everything from the expected times of response to the number of people staffed. OSHA, which is also, it is American, it's the United States Department of Labor, Occupational Health and Safety Association, and I'm using the US because there isn't a national standard in Canada. We also looked at it very specifically, sets down recommendations for what you should have for minimum staffing. In Ontario, although it's not a law, it's a guideline, and followed fairly strictly by most fire services, it's the Ontario Ministry of Labor's Section 21 Committee. The Section 21 Committee, in two separate files, actually addresses this question of staffing. Recommendations, standards. 1710 is a very strict standard. It covers everything from first response from every kind of emergency, whether it be fire, medical, high-rise, the number of firefighters that are expected to respond, and the type of apparatus, and the time they have to get there. It covers everything from the city of Owen Sound, where you have one on-duty crew, to the city of New York, where you've got, I think it's 180, or more than that. But, so, I don't know of a municipality that can meet the standards in 1710, but we all should strive to work towards them. All three, 1710, OSHA, and Section 21 Committee, all recommend that to, for a residential fire, when you pull up on the scene of a house fire, before anyone can go in the fire and fight the fire or effect a rescue, you need two firefighters in the building and two firefighters on the outside. Referred in two of the three to two in, two out. That's the easiest way to summarize it. Two in, as your first-in company to put it, to attack the fire or effect a rescue, two on the outside that are ready to go in if the first two run into trouble. All three specifically address that. Two of them, or, OSHA says that in extreme or special circumstances, if you don't have five people on the scene, oh, I also should say that NFPA, and OSHA, and Section 21 are very clear that the pump operator, that's the fifth person here in Owen Sound, should not be a member of either the first-in company or the RIT, Rapid Intervention Team, the two on the outside, so two in, two out. First in, RIT. That the pump operator shouldn't be included, because you can't leave an operating pump of people on a hose line in a building unstaffed. So they do say that in, not NFPA, but OSHA and Section 21, in special circumstances, if you don't have the four people on the scene, you can enter, but you take, you have to measure the risk. So if Mrs. Smith is trapped on the second floor, and you think nowhere near the fire, and you can safely get in and get her, two can go in to rescue with one on the outside, but in lay terms, you're taking your chance. So, we also, we looked at those three standards, they're very clear. Two in, two out, pump operator, which you currently have here in Owen Sound. But you can't ignore the fact that across the province, almost all your comparators, except one, run with four, when you have one crew on duty. We've got, just, you know, within a few hours' drive of here, you've got Calladon and Orangeville, and Wasaga Beach, and Collingwood, et cetera. They run with four, you run with five. They're all composite departments. They all have volunteers that are members of that department within the community that respond in, certainly in a reasonable amount of time. The question from five to four therefore falls on your shoulders. You have five under the collective agreement, can you go down to four? And can you go down to four safely? You have, I, a situation where, when your first crew arrives on the scene, regardless of how quickly the second crew gets there, whether it's in the current standby crew model, or automatic aid, or combined service, the ability, when you pull up on the scene with those first five firefighters, to go in and effect that rescue and safely have people on the outside. If you went down to four, and you pull up on the scene, immediately you couldn't do that. But whether or not it's safe to go down to four depends on how quickly that fifth person is getting on the scene. Currently, it's your standby. If it were volunteers with a, with a contract with the Intertownship Fire Board, how quickly can they get on the scene? Realistically, by the time you pull on the scene and do your 360, do a check of the building, and get your, get packed up, and get geared up, and get the hose line off, often that fifth person may be on the scene, but not all the time. So do you go with five, where you have the ability to do that interior firefighting, effect a rescue right off the bat, or you go down to four? That's your choice. Here in the city, we looked at responses over the past, since the end of 2015, you average about 25 calls a year where you need a second alarm. So 25 times a year that those on-duty, or those standby firefighters are called in. Of those, a handful are actual fires. In staffing to five, the cost, it's in the report, staffing to five in 2017, cost about $186,000 in overtime, because when somebody's off sick, and that includes long-term LTD, long-term disability as well, so it's a little bit skewed. This isn't simply people phoning in sick that day. You have to up-staff with one person on overtime to keep it at five, was about $186,000 in 2017. Allowing it to go down to four firefighters would conceivably, in a ballpark, depending on the year, save that amount of money. 25 times a year, you need them. And when you look at the sick use, LTD in short term, in 2017, about 28% of the time, you actually had to call in overtime. So from the number of calls you run second alarm, only 28% of them, and I'm not telling you what to do, I'm only giving you the facts, and they're certainly contained in the report, you have to weigh the risk. In the FPPA, municipality sets a level of response, assumes a related risk, members of council have to assume that risk when you set the level of response, and the data in the review should help you do that. That's a quick synopsis of it. We can, there may be questions about that, I think, later at the end. Now we're getting into, to get through this a little bit quicker, the, what we called the low-hanging fruit, the, some of the items that can quickly, we hope, improve response and suppression activities in Owen Sound Fire. The first one is to review and update the SOGs, DOGs, standing orders, and house rules. There's a long list of standing, standard operating guidelines. Chief and deputy are busy. They need to be updated. Some of them are still, we've got SOGs and DOGs, are essentially the same thing, they suffer by the fact that some of them are called differently, because we've got SOGs, DOGs, SOPs, that somewhat do the same thing. There are a few that are contradictory. Nothing that presents a danger, but they should be updated to 2018 standards. They're constantly reviewed, and there's dates all over them. Let's start fresh, get them done. We suggest in the report that it should be a joint effort between administration and the members of the Firefighters Association, who administer the SOGs every day, with the proviso certainly that at the end of the day, the chief gets a final say on what they are. But here's an opportunity for the administration and the association members to work together to update. It's not a small task. There's over 60 SOGs alone, and there's half a dozen of them on emergency response that could probably be put together into one or two. It's time they were updated, it would certainly make response safer and better and quicker. Along those efforts, provide an added, some added administrative support for the fire chief and deputy. Right now, they get most weeks about a half a day. With all the administration and fire marshals' reports that are mandatory and legislated in the fire service, the chief and deputy are spending a lot of time doing work that certainly doesn't require their expertise or someone at their level. Some administrative support would free up some time when they're not just simply putting data into a computer that could be done at the administrative level, to work on things like updating the SOGs and DOGs, and strengthening the relationship with the Firefighters Association. Improve the standby accountability program. If the standby system continues. Currently, when the firefighters that are on standby arrive at the scene, they write down their time of arrival in a book, on a sheet of paper, an accountability sheet. And they look at a clock that's attached to it, they write it in. That accounts for when they arrived on the scene. They're equipped very well right now, with their equipment on the truck, and they've got five portable radios. We've suggested, and the 911 call centers, that they can accommodate it. We number the five radios from one to five, big yellow letters on them, they can't, easy to follow, important at the other end, because when they arrive on the scene, they grab the first radio available and order one through five, simply radio standby firefighter one on the scene. Provides two things. Now we have an accurate accountability, and the incident commander, who is relying on radio traffic to know what's going on at the scene, knows they're at the scene. Currently, the standby firefighters show up, they may be parked around the corner, the truck may be staged around the corner, the incident commander may not know they're on the scene and able to provide support until they tap them on the shoulder. We need to tighten up that accountability for a number of reasons. Improve the standby program supervision. Currently, the collective agreement covers that standby procedure, dictates you need five people, but it doesn't say that one of them needs to be a captain or an acting captain. The FPPA, or, sorry, the NFPA 1710 is very clear that every responding company must have supervision. The Occupational Health and Safety Act in Ontario too, although most of it doesn't pertain to fire, certainly says that you need supervision. If five firefighters show up, and one of them isn't a captain, now you've got 10 firefighters on the scene and one captain, who may be tied up with the incident command or in the building. The span of control is just far too wide. We would like to see the collective agreement modified to say that if they're going to, if you're going to continue with the standby program, that at least one of them responding, one of the five always be an officer, or acting officer. Review the motor vehicle collision dispatch program to ensure maximum effective use of fire crews. The numbers of motor vehicle collisions that Owen Sound Fire is responding to has decreased. Someone anecdotally, we're told that the police typically ask for fire, that they just don't want to inconvenience the firefighters. Like, why have them out if we don't need them? Our experts think that they're being underutilized, because where the police may think, we don't need a fire crew on the scene, sometimes I've heard from police officers, they get in the way, that's why you need them on the scene. You've got a 15-ton, big, red, bright block that gets in the way, so people can't enter the scene in a car and cause problems. Working as a blocker, underutilized, and in spite of what you may have been told in previous years, in our opinion, the cost of having the fire service or a fire crew, first-line crew, on a pumper, respond to that MVC is the price of the fuel. first-line crew on a pumper, respond to that MVC is the price of the fuel to drive there and back. They're on duty, they're in the city anyhow, even if they're not affecting a rescue, doing an extrication, providing patient care, anytime there's a multi-vehicle collision where, where there's a possibility of a car entering in to the hot zone at the collision, let's get a fire truck there to act as a blocker and they can certainly help out the police and paramedic crews. Along those lines, reciprocal training between the Owen Sound Fire and Emergency Services and the Owen Sound Police Service, we've instituted this in the past, valuable, valuable experience. They don't spend enough time together. We would like to see, put training, a training officer from the fire service in front of the Owen Sound police officers and vice versa, simply so they can appreciate what each other do and how they can be of assistance to each other. As much as police may underestimate the value of fire at a, we just talked about motor vehicle collisions, fire would certainly like police to know what they expect from them at a house fire. Do not rush in, try to save Mrs. Smith, we'll do that when we get there. Help with traffic, help with interviewing witnesses, help keep people back, help aid with the people who've been displaced until other agencies arrive on the scene, and a lot of that isn't done simply because we don't share what we need to do with the police, and there's a great opportunity, it's, it's cross-training. I know there'll be a lot of kidding going on about eating donuts and, and, you know, whatever they tease fire about, but here, it, in the long run, it, it creates a, especially when you're in the same tier here in the city of Guelph, it, it makes us a stronger first response presence on the streets of Owen Sound. Establish a formal fire dispatch agreement. Now, you've seen a couple of other things about dispatch, we're going to get into more. Typically, in doing a review like this, the first task we would do would be to, to do a thorough deep dive into the response capabilities and response performance. What's your response performance like every fire department, because 1710 certainly covers it, you're expected to be there in 480 seconds. We, in reviewing the response performance, had to look at FirePro. FirePro is the record-keeping software that the fire service uses. The CAD system, computer-aided dispatch system at the 911 center, records all of the times for every single emergency, they're input by the dispatch operator, and then the CAD system populates FirePro. Into the CAD, into FirePro. We looked at FirePro at over 100 calls to look at details around second and third response, and found that the data around the times was unusable. The inconsistencies and mistakes jumped out at us, not occasionally, not always, but in many, many, many calls, since things like, so they, they should record call received, dispatched, leaving the station, on the scene, and then every benchmark after that. Second alarm dispatched, agent applied, so that's water put on the fire, fire under control, means it's not advancing anymore, a lot, all of those things, all of those benchmarks should be clearly input into the CAD system, and you should be able to rely on the fact they're, they're accurate. But we found a number of instances, for instance, where the arrival time was after the dispatch time, which is impossible, you can't get there before your dispatch. A lot of inconsistencies, many, many inconsistencies, and made our review of response times impossible. We're not trying to avoid the work I've done, and we just did a, just, I just finished a big project in Calgary where I poured over hours and hours and hours and hours of response times, because they were trying to set a council-approved response time level. There were situations where it wasn't done correctly, but they weren't mistakes, I mean, you could count on the data being accurate. We're not going to suppose that it's incompetence on the part of, of the dispatchers, we just think that they don't appreciate the importance of it, and that's why the next step about establishing a former user group that includes all of the great county fire services and chief barfoot, but would clearly lay out what the expectations are. And, there's an NFPA standard 1221 that lays out what those expectations are. Currently, the dispatchers, in, in their defense, they're busy. They dispatch over 20 different services between fire and police and they're busy in there, and it's difficult to find the time to type something out. We're told the CAD system has the ability to have a point and click, where there's an icon on the CAD for every benchmark. Let's, let's program the CAD so the icons are there, let's set a service agreement where the, the 911 call center agrees to, to aim towards the 1221, NFPA 1221 levels, and let's train the operators on the importance of maintaining those, those benchmarks and accurately recording them, so we have an idea of how, how well the fire service is responding from a time perspective. There's a couple of reasons, I'm not typically a, the sky is falling, the sky is falling kind of guy, but if you were sitting, if I, with my previous fire chief hat on, sitting in a lawsuit or an inquest and didn't have accurate response data, I'd be pretty uncomfortable. The data's important, it's not a nice-to-have, it's a need-to-have, so we really need to tighten that up. It would have made the report better from a perspective around the actual, the actual response times. Along that lines, the last, oh, we've got a couple more here. Train and qualify the dispatch personnel, here's another NFPA qualification, the NFPA certification for firefighters is 1001, officers 1021, we've got 31, 41, 51, and 61, 1061 is, is the operational level or the training for a dispatcher. We'd like to see them trained to that level, because, and it's not that difficult, it would simply drive home the importance of what all of these benchmarks mean and why it's so important to have them accurate. Next is establish a suppression dispatch orientation program, and this goes both ways. We've, we've both, both Chief Irwin and I have used it, and Chief Stewart, in our, in our previous positions as fire chiefs, in putting dispatchers in a ride-on with a fire crew, so they can actually see what it means to, so they know what it, when they hear the call in the station and the peculiarities around that, we'll get into that a bit, a little bit later, what it means to respond to a call, what it means to be on the scene, and how difficult it is to pay attention to the radio, understand things with all that's going on around you. Not easy, if they appreciate that, they'll be more receptive to, or more willing to, maybe it could be talk slower, or it could be just let's keep track of these times better. And conversely, we have in the past, and strongly suggest that all officers, so captains and acting captains, at least at the start of their career as an officer, and likely every couple of years after that, spend a day in dispatch, so they can appreciate how busy they are. And if they don't answer right away to your radio transmission, it's likely because they've got a couple of other calls on the go, and that appreciation, working together as a team will just make everything, at, at the end of the day, they're all there for the same reason, is provide a safe response to the citizens of Owen Sound, and that, and that appreciation and feeling that they're all part of the same team would make things run smoother, and I think we'd see less errors. Implement the changes to the CAD benchmarking capabilities, I said we would get to this, and this is simply, instead of having the, the operators sit and type things in, put that point and click, put those icons on the screen, not the train, and, and it's just so much easier, instead of typing in, second alarm dispatched, for me, that would take a minute. Even if you can do it quickly, you're distracted, your eyes off the screen, you're not watching what's going on, a simple mouse point and click, second alarm dispatched, the icon's right there, done, and all those benchmarks are, are there for the, for the next review to go in and give an accurate look at, pardon me, at response times. Next one, install a CAD printer in the station, this is probably the easiest and least expensive of all the recommendations up there, because it's, it's, it's probably in the neighborhood of a couple hundred dollars. You have an old headquarters, concrete block walls, we worked in there for two months, it echoes, it's sometimes very difficult to hear the call come in. From upstairs to downstairs, you're running down a concrete block stairwell, feet clumping, it's, it's hard to hear the call, so the firefighters are relegated to listening to it repeated twice often, before they can start, mark their way to, make their way to the truck. In emergency response, seconds are everything, seconds can save lives. Installing a CAD printer in the station, and it's, it's not new technology, and, and we were told by the IT person at the 911 call center, who would help with this, it's easy to do. That way, the firefighters, as soon as they hear the tone go off, things start making their way to the truck, the captain, as he's walking through the captain's office on the way to the truck, walks by a printer, because they take four seconds to print, it's going to be sitting there waiting for him every time, pulls out a sheet of paper, not like that one, and it'll say on it, or not unlike that one, it'll say on it the location of the call, the address, the nature of the emergency, and the cross streets. And I was very impressed here in Owen Sound, if you know the cross streets, every firefighter in the city can get there in seconds, because it's, you know, one to whatever avenue's running one way and one to whatever street's running the other, and if you put, it's simple and ea, it's not new technology. When we spoke to the firefighters in the association, they thought that would be a great idea, and if you can save 30 seconds on every call, when we have accurate data to measure it, that, those 30 seconds can make the difference between life and death, and often it may mean more than that. Turnout time is important, from the moment the tone goes off till that truck pulls out of the station, if we can get them to the truck sooner, and the other thing is, some streets may sound somewhat alike and you can get confused. Here you've got streets and avenues, and there's a number of things, you have to look very, listen very, very carefully, and you may hear it wrong. When the CAD system, when the address is printed, put in the same as it is today, and it prints out immediately what that address is, the captain climbs in the cab of the truck and right in front of him, black and white, it clearly says what the address is, and with the cross streets, and also, no mystery around what the nature of the call is, because subtle changes are something you may miss here, and the type of call could be the difference between a fire and a public assistance call. It, it will help them form the decision on whether or not to ask for a second alarm, and certainly help the crew prepare better on the way to the call, so I won't beat that one to death, but it's a cheap solution to a current problem. Install an audio, it shouldn't be an Audi, we're not going to buy anybody an Audi. Install an audio pre-alert for station dispatch, it's a health and safety thing, right now the tones go off, I was standing in the deputy's doorway the other day, talking to him and the tone went off, and I, and I've been doing this for 40 years and it only jumped out of my skin. An audio pre-alert is typically a ramped-up tone. The amount of adrenaline that surges through your blood vessels when, when the tone goes off, for anybody over a 30-year career is, can be hard on your heart. So an audio pre-alert, it simply starts slower, so it ramps up, it's only over a matter of four or five seconds until it gets to where the, now it's just a loud piercing squeal. It's, it's a ramped-up pre-alert that helps ease you in to the point where the important information comes across, first audio, and then, and then in the printer. Second and third alarm dispatch technology, now the second alarm, and this, this could be regardless of whether or not we have, continue with the standby or an automatic aid agreement, now the second alarms go out over a pager, it's a simple digital address, and, and it's not two-way communication. There's software readily available and used by the departments around you here, and one of them is who's responding, another one is, is just to, just to beef up the e-dispatch's software used now that the firefighters have access to on their personal cell phones. Not only will it give you the address and the nature of the call, but the firefighter can actually just touchscreen their phone and say that I'm on my way. Because currently, if the dispatcher dispatches the five firefighters on call or volunteers, if, if they did have automatic aid here in, in the city, they have no idea whether or not they got the message or how many are on their way. If the five of them that are currently on duty or on call, get the call instead of on a pager, which is one-way and somewhat antiquated, on their cellphone and it says the address is 123 Anywhere Street, and they hit an icon on it with their finger and it says I'm on my way, now the dispatcher knows that how many people are responding, comes up on the screen, tells them five people on their way. They can also hit it when they're on the scene, which would make the earlier suggestion around using the portable radios a moot point. Either way, we need to tighten up the accountability and, and we were told in meeting with our, our 911 call center, that the current e-dispatch's software that's used has the ability to be, to be ramped up at very little, if any, any cost. Last three involve capital purchases. Number one is purchase a marked emergency vehicle for the use of the on-duty chief. Currently, as I mentioned before, the chief and deputy are on call 50% of the time, they share duties, they respond in their personal vehicles. They have no lights, they have no sirens, they have no mobile radios, they have a portable, which don't work as well as a mobile in the vehicle, and they have no mobile data terminal that we're going to get to in the next two, that can provide you with the information they need for the call to work as the incident, as the incident commander. As the innocent, incident commander on most incidents, once the incident's fully staffed up, they should be sitting in their vehicle if they've got a, a mobile data terminal in front of them, a tablet that's giving them all the information going on, getting constant updates from dispatch, et cetera, et cetera, in a vehicle that's marked, and anybody that comes upon the scenes knows where they are. I assume now in the city, most of the police officers likely recognize the two chiefs' pickup trucks, but they're nondescript, we've got a Ram and a Ford, and it's, today, when I was in the headquarters, there was three black Rams in the parking lot, so any one of them could be the chief pulling up into the scene, and, and I don't mean to make light of it, because as a fire chief who responded to some emergencies, I always had, it was an unmarked car, but it had lights and sirens, so I could get there quickly when need be, and when I was on the scene could leave the lights on, so that certainly the police and members of the public, if they wanted to address the chief, knew where to come. It, I will certainly go, easily go as far to say it's unsafe for the chief and the deputy currently to be responding through the city in an unmarked vehicle. No lights, no sirens, we want them there in a hurry, they're part of the initial response when they're requested to attend the scene, and they have to get there, certainly, in a marked vehicle, they still have to stop at red lights, but they can hit their siren and go through, they can get there, they're not worrying about people pulling in front of them, and not worrying about a police officer going, no, 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 the road's closed, you can't come in here, it's for, for a number of reasons, they, and they could, they could have one to share. There's only the two of them, you have one headquarters, leave it at the headquarters, take it home when you're on duty. And if they're going shopping or to a hockey game in the park, in the, in the vehicle sitting in the parking lot, that's, that's, as far as I'm concerned, a citizen in Owen Sound, I think that's great, because we've got an on-duty officer moving around the city doing, doing his thing, so it's, it's important. Install mobile data terminals in all apparatus, right now we only have one in the first responding pumper, and it's not up to, it's enough to what it could do. Enhance the MDD, mobile data terminal capabilities is the next suggestion, these two go hand in hand. Make a more, more robust MDT program that takes advantage of all the information that's available to the data terminals, and then get one in each of the first-line apparatus, including the chief's vehicle. So that's, those are the 20 recommendations, as you saw, the first three were somewhat detailed, there's 56 pages here that, that gives the rationale for, for each of the recommendations. I hope I, I helped explain them all. Before we get into questions, I want to thank the city of Owen Sound, and I want to thank Chief Irwin for his assistance, and I certainly want to thank staff and the members of the public, and senior administration staff at FIRE and the Fire Association for all of their help. Like I said, we had to compress the time here to get this done, and we, we certainly couldn't have done it without them. So now, with your permission, Madam Acting Mayor, I'll throw the floor open for questions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody need clarification on anything, councillor?
I have some questions, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks Andy for your presentation and your detailed report. I'm assuming this is not the first fire assessment you've done, can you just give us a bit of a detailed background in, in terms of other municipalities that you've done this for?
Okay, through you, Madam Mayor. A focused review, we've, we've done a number of cities, and a focused review like this that looked at essentially the same situation recently, the city of Branford, a little bigger, but certainly not a big urban department, and the city of Fredericton, which is smaller than you, than you may imagine, and they were comprehen, not, not, not a master plan, not a full look at the fire's operations, but in their emergency response capabilities around the question of staffing. I just finished a job in Calgary that I may have touched on, or we did, and it was a much bigger project, and they were attempting, which is very unusual for city council, has established a desired response time that is not 1710, but quite close to it, and the question was around strictly their response capabilities from a time perspective.
Okay, some of my questions you've touched on, but I might be looking for a little more detail. On page 13 of the report, it says firefighters that respond to a second alarm report that they are on the scene by, by writing the time on an accountability form. The form is located in the portable radio compartment and the initial beside their name. You go on to say these forms are incomplete, why are they incomplete? To me, it's black and white, you're either accountable or you're not, you're either there or you're not.
By incomplete, and we perhaps should have given more information than that, there, the initials are there and the times are there, but it should have a current, there's no spot on it for the nature of the, of the emergency, it would just make it that much easier to do a review. Often, the address was inconsistent or incorrect, because somebody's writing it on, so you can imagine, I should preface it with this, you're pulling up to an emergency scene, it's pouring rain, you've got a house fire, and you've got to stop and write your, you sign your name and put a time in on a sheet of paper in the back of a fire truck, highly inefficient and ineffective, and I think that's where the inconsistencies occur. They're writing their name and signing their, putting their initial, but they're not filling in some of the information that would be very valuable to have in those aforementioned inquests or lawsuits. If we implement the new accountability suggestions we put in there, then the signup sheets would simply be an adjunct or an add-on to get an initial, they wouldn't be what we're relying on for the data that's necessary to review.
Okay, we have firefighters that have not shown up for a second alarm. Okay, we have firefighters that have not shown up for a second alarm. My conversations with four or five retired firefighters reveal this didn't happen at all 15 years ago. Is the, is this a province-wide trend, or is this an Owen Sound problem? And also, why is it happening?
From a standby crew response model like Owen Sound has, it is absolutely unique here at Owen Sound. It's not a province-wide trend, because it's the only fire department we know in the Province of Ontario that currently operates under this model. Where standby firefighters are required to respond and put their name and, and sign in a, in a book, and are required to respond in an automatic aid relationship or in a composite department, off-duty firefighters, truly off-duty firefighters, or volunteers that supplement the full-time response, can choose to respond or not respond. Some do, some don't. But i- in this case, it's, it's extremely unique, so I can't comment on what's going on across the province. In the case of the very few, where we had someone who didn't show up, someone anecdotally, it was typically blamed on, on technology, and it's not hard to imagine that the pager didn't work. Or they were in a spot where they didn't get the call. It's, it's not that common. It's, it's certainly a concern that we're not having the five show up because we're counting on them, and if we had the, who's responding or the e-dispatch's software, then we'd know, and you could send out another dispatch for a full one.
Okay, still on page 13, and you did touch on this a bit, it says unfortunately, the data contained within the FirePro record system was inconsistent and unreliable. There were obvious inaccuracies, such as crews were reported on-scene before they were even dispatched. Do we have a dispatch issue?
I believe we do, and I, I, I would like to think that it's not a competency issue, it's simply a lack of training and, and understanding the importance of having these numbers and having them accurately reported, because after the fact, they're essential. Not only in managing the department and managing your response, but again, we're back to the, to the aforementioned inquests and lawsuits. It's, it's, it's in, it's 2018. We, we need to keep those numbers accurate, and I think if the dispatchers understood the importance, certainly with the cross-training and bringing up the 1610 standards, or we would, or 1061 standards, we, there's a lot of numbers in NFPA. The 1061 standards, then certainly do a review after that, and if there's an issue, it'd have to be dealt with. But I, I think we just need to train them and bring them up on the importance of having accurate data.
Okay, you said the, the only true comparable department is Brockville. Ironically, Brockville will tell you what they're doing there is not sustainable. Do they have a fire, do they have a volunteer fire department in the heart of Brockville like we do?
No, this is unique, unique situation.
So they're not really a true comparable, they are comparable?
Yeah, they're, they're comparable in the sense that they also have five firefighters responding. There isn't a truly comparable fire service in this province. There certainly isn't another one that's fully a, a full-time professional department where you've got a volunteer department contained within the boundaries of the city. It's unique.
Okay. If we move to a composite or a fire aid department, what happens to the rating with the Underwriters Association?
Chief contacted, corresponded with the Underwriters, Fire Underwriters Survey, the FUS, F-U-S, FUS, to ask some years ago whether or not reducing the response or the on-duty firefighters from five to four would have any impact. The reply then was no. They just got a recent reply and an update to your FUS rating, and clearly spelled out that, from what they know today, it would not reduce the rating, it would put you on the cusp on the residential side, but it wouldn't reduce it for now, and just cautioned to keep an eye on what the response level and, and response times would be with your volunteer contracted firefighters under the automatic aid agreement. So they're saying no with the proviso that, assuming that the response times aren't negatively impacted.
Okay, last question. In your opinion, the only way to lower fire emergency services' costs is to lower the salary costs. Out of the nine comparables, Owen Sound pays the most for fire service per household at $240, and sits at the bottom of the barrel in household income. Is our fire service operation sustainable?
That's, that's an interesting question.
Like, we're, we are maxed out.
Yeah.
We, we pay the most, we have the least money coming in, we, we can't keep raising taxes for emergency services.
I, I don't want to avoid that question, but only you can decide whether or not it's sustainable. The, the, the arbitrated rulings in this province under the interest arbitration system is, even though the FPPA, the, I'm beginning explaining around why the situation is, as we find it in the Province of Ontario, with salaries that are basically the same all across the board. Salary of a firefighter in Toronto is not different, while we don't know what it is in Owen Sound, because it's been several years since we had a negotiated agreement, but the, the salaries across the province, for instance, in Toronto are the same as they are in Sudbury, roughly the same as they are in Thunder Bay, and any professional service across the province. Some municipalities are obviously with growth or tax base in a better position to, to pay than others. The FPPA grants a municipality an interest arbitration to argue ability to pay. Clearly says that a municipality can argue they do not have the ability to pay for the service that they have today. The arbit, arbitarial rulings to this point, and one famous one early on and after the development of the, of the FPPA, was to say that municipalities always have the ability to pay, they simply raise taxes. So is it sustainable? Only you can, can answer that. It's what level of taxation you want to, to impose on the people.
Well, just for the record, I, I don't mind answering that. It's not sustainable. Thanks, Andy, appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay, you finished. Councilor Thomas?
Thanks, I had a lot of questions until Councilor O'Leary got going. And I certainly wish some of those interest arbitrators could come and talk to some of the ratepayers that I talked to at election time. In your estimation on under-recommendations associated with systemic changes, reducing the minimum on-duty suppression staffing from five firefighters to four, is that something that could be easily achieved through attrition?
I, I don't know what the numbers are for attrition right now. Easily achieved? Explain easily achieved.
Is that something that could be achieved through attrition?
Well, it would be very, very difficult right now, because your collective agreement specifies you have to have five firefighters on duty.
Right.
That's, that's the reality.
Thank you.
Is that it, Richard? I have Peter next.
Okay, a couple of questions. If we go to four first responders, which certainly is desirable, we can't afford five, would the second call be four as well? He didn't really say which way that would go.
If, it would depend on the change to the collective agreement, oh, through you, Madam Mayor, sorry. It, it would depend on the changes to the collective agreement. Collective agreement currently says you have to have five minimum on-duty, and five would be called back. If there was a change to the collective agreement that, that went to an automatic aid model, then there wouldn't be four or five called back, the, the inter-t township volunteers would be called back, and that may be, depending on how the model is structured, it may be 10, 15, or 20. So collective agreement restricts whether it's five or four, I would, if you were to negotiate five instead of, or four instead of five, it would make sense that you would negotiate that for the callback. If it's an automatic aid, then the numbers are, are much higher for that initial response. I, I hope that answers your question.
It does, and the, the other point, the arbitration system is broken badly. The risk to a fireman in Owen Sound, well, to a risk of a fireman in Toronto, is something like that in difference. Our highest building, I think, is eight stories. Toronto, I don't know what the highest building is, but it's a heck of a lot more than eight, and the risk goes up. We don't have any huge chemical plants, like they have in Sarnia, which can go bang in the middle of the night. And I really think that the arbiters, somehow, somebody's got to get to the minister and ask him not to appoint people till they take their fire hats off. Because I honestly think they're professional firefighters, they're not independent, because they don't act in an independent way, when they assume the cost of living in Owen Sound is the same as it is in Toronto. $350,000 in Owen Sound will buy you a fantastic house. In Toronto, it'll buy you a slump. So think about it.
Thank you. Scott, Travis?
That's twice now, Deputy Mayor, but anyways, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I do have a couple of quick questions. Andy, thanks again for coming and giving this presentation. Obviously, it's full of information that both we as a council and everyone needs to take back and, and take another look at it again, obviously, over the next several years. The, the one thing you do mention, you say fire protection accounts for 16.8 cents of every property tax dollar collected. You further along, go on and say the only way to lower operating costs is our lower salary costs. The three recommendations that you did give to us today, to, to go into collective agreement, which are things that we don't have control over unless we go through our bargaining system. In your study that you did, you just conducted, did you find any other cost-saving practices besides the three that you just recommended that we have no control over?
Nothing of any significance. The, the reality is that anywhere 93 to 94 and a half percent of, of the fire operating budget is salaries, and that's not unusual, that's the same across the province. Capital, fire trucks are very expensive, buildings are expensive, but operating, it's, it's the cost of salaries and fuel. So that, that's why that's in there. When we say the only way to significantly reduce it is to reduce salaries. Now, there is the opportunity, perhaps, if, if you didn't call in all that overtime to save $180,000 a year, but when 95% of the, the budget salaries, the only way to reduce the budget significantly would be take something out of that 95%.
100%. So I, I guess the, the biggest thing we need to understand for the public needs to recognize is, those are three great, great recommendations that you've put forward, you have a lot of background information on them, why they'd be viable, but those are end results that ultimately it's going to go through a collective bargaining agreement that's going to be done by a, a set of some administrators elsewhere, to get to the, any sort of point to change those salary costs, correct? Correct?
I, that, that's the path you're going down today.
Yes.
I would like, nothing personally would make me happier than to see both sides get back to the table and come to some resolve that would get an agreement without having, have it signed or decided by a third party.
Right.
A, a little bit of my background, for 15 years, I taught collective bargaining at Queen's University in, in their Labor Relations Program. I would love to see the teams get back together and, and, and get a solution without having to leave it in the hands of an arbitrator, because I'm, through, Madam Mayor, Counselor, I'm as frustrated with the interest arbitration system as you are. For years, I chaired a provincial bargaining committee with the Ontario Association of Fire Chiefs to try to find a, a better solution. But it's, it's the playing field that we have, I don't see it changing quickly, it may, but we have to work within the boundaries of what we have to play with. A number of municipalities, bigger, chiefs' associations, lawyers, we, we keep the lawyers rich in fighting the interest arbitration system, but that's the game plan, or the game that we have to play within. So the only way to avoid it is to get to the table and get a negotiated settlement.
For sure, and, and that's a valid, a valid comment. I'm sure there'd be many members of this council who'd agree that we should be doing that opposed to going to an arbitration system. The other things that you did bring in, though, out of your 20 recommendations, three of them are consisted of our recommendations that we just discussed, the other following three would be the ones about expensive, or extensive capital expenses, including the vehicle, and some of the other, other capital projects. The low-hanging fruit is what you listed, and that's about 14 recommendations. That's basically more about for the efficiencies.
Yes.
Of what we can conduct.
Not, not just efficiencies, but improvement, and some of them are associated with improvement in response time, so that's very, very important.
100%. Public safety is, is just, is more important. My question, I guess, would be through you to the city manager, is, do some of those that they have listed in those 14 recommendations, do those consist of something that our current system has the capability to, to handle?
Through you, Your Worship, certainly in discussions with Andy and the chief and the deputy, yes. And, and if I may, Your Worship, add that some of them involve the, the participation of the association as well, like reviewing the SOGs, and, and the answer to that is yes, they, they've committed to, to help with that. And, and it's really important to add, some of the improvements are already underway. You know, working on getting a printer installed, we've had, we've had meeting, the consultants with the 911 call center management team and made some of the suggestions. So we're already, you know, they didn't wait for, we've been communicating and getting information and help from staff, we've also been sharing our findings as we went along, and they're already, to their credit, working on getting some of these things put into place.
Thank you.
Okay, Congressman Scarry.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Excellent presentation tonight, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate it very much, and thank you to you. The question I have, when you were discussing standby call, call-in times, was there any consideration given to, I mean, this is a, a unique area, being that we're somewhat urban-rural, any consideration given to the location of where firefighters may live, as it would pertain to their ability or their time to respond to a, a second alarm, third alarm call-in?
We had a number of conversations about that. The firefighters are expected, under the collective agreement, and it's made clear to them when they're employed, that they need to be able to respond in a reasonable amount of time. That there's no time limit specified. One person's reasonable maybe, and I don't mean to sound flippant, but one person's reasonable may not be the other person's reasonable. So yes, they're, they're expected to live close by. That provision in the collective agreement is actually administered by the association. The agreement is that the association will ensure five people are going to be available in a reasonable amount of time. I wish I could tell you what those times are, but it's the inconsistency. So, but to answer your question, there is no time limit, and it's, it's, it's kind of, could miss whether or not they're meeting reasonable amount of time, because that hasn't been established, and we don't have the numbers.
Thank you.
Councilor Kepke?
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, for all of your explanations, and my questions have pretty well been answered. However, I did want to extend appreciation for the detail that you did put in the report on lots of little technical things that will improve efficiencies and so on. My comment is to the taxpayer, the budget that we have for 2018 for fire services is just under $5 million, and just over 500,000 of that is operating. The remaining is salary and benefits, and that's something that's very, very difficult for us. So hopefully, some of these recommendations that you've made can be implemented, and we can do something about that for the taxpayer.
Okay, that is, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think you can see by your questions and that, that council has appreciated the report that's come in, and, and I'm sure that we will be acting on many of the things that are in there.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, now, moving on to question period, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to ask a question of council? Could you please state your name and your address, please?
Ruth Folker, 1592 Seventh Avenue East, Owen Sound.
Welcome, Ruth.
Thank you. I'm here to ask all you councilmen, if you got a water bill for $2,937.23, would you pay it? Would you pay it? My question is, would you pay it?
Would I pay it?
Yes.
If I owed the money, I would have to pay it. If I used the water, I would have to pay it.
But I didn't use the water. I was in Florida, got home on the 26th of March, I got a water bill, April the 6th, for this amount. Now they did take off the waste, but how the hell can I have waste when I didn't have any water? That's my point. Now, if you still want to work with me, I have got to the point, I'm going to hire a lawyer from out of town and sue you for all the aggravation you have caused me and the stress I am going under. And you can tell I'm under stress.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you want to answer my questions, get a hold of me. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that this lady has been to our committee meetings. Yeah, okay. Is there anyone else that has a question in the audience?
Do I have to push that? I don't know if it's on. Oh. You want my name and address?
Name and address, please.
It's Tracy Dempsey. I live in Owen Sound. Mayor and councilors, we have two questions tonight, and I'm going to ask the first, and then my colleagues will ask the second. We work at the Owen Sound Family Health We work at the On Sound Family Health Organization. We are nurses, we are clerical and custodial staff. We have been on strike since May 22nd, but we do not want to be on strike. We want to get back to work because we love what we do. Our goal is to provide quality health care to patients and families of On Sound, but the low pay and high turnover has made this impossible. We are not asking for the moon. We are just asking for modest wage increases, but the owners have refused. Nearly 1,000 people have signed our petition supporting our fight for fair wages and working conditions. Will you, as city councilors, sign the petition supporting our fight for decent wages?
The next question, please.
Okay. I'm Kif Harvey. I live in On Sound, 242nd Avenue West. I'm sure you're aware that about the strike and that we've been out for over nine weeks now. We thought we were going back to the table to get a deal last week, but instead, the employer has retaliated. Now, we want to replace, now they want to replace all the clerical staff and want to eliminate all nursing positions.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
What is your question?
Basically, we're wanting to know if the counselor could write the owners of the On Sound Family Health Team and request that they keep nurses and trained clerical workers on staff.
Okay, thank you. Is there another question?
My name is Lori Hills, and we're also wondering if City Council would write to the Health Minister of Ontario and request that she ensure people in On Sound have nurses and trained clerical workers at their only family health clinic.
Okay, thank you. Is there another question?
I wondered if any of the counselors might have questions for us.
No, this council will not take a position one way or the other. I thank you very much for coming, and we certainly hope that things will get settled soon.
Does everyone understand what the issues are?
Yes, I believe we do. We choose not to get involved. It just simply isn't our purview.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move on now. We do correspondence. We have a correspondence from Paula Nile, Gray County Historical Society, volunteer Polish, pardon me? No, I'm continuing on. The letter is there, a very interesting letter. Marion?
Thank you very much. I've had my hand waving. You didn't see me. First of all, I wanted to identify that this was certainly a special day that we did attend Counselor Thomas and Counselor Greg and myself to have the Polish, the Consul General there and to recognize this tree from 1942 that was discovered in 1972. And it was such a treat to meet him and his spouse and friends that were there as well, and to present him with a small token of our appreciation of him attending to this little tree ceremony. And I think it's only fitting, the letter that Paula Nile has written, Paula did pull all of this together in very short notice, and she's written, asking that, expressing a desire of the Consul General to put a permanent plaque in On Sound somewhere very visible that would thank the citizens of On Sound for the generous hospitality given to the Polish soldiers in the Navy and the airmen. She's recommending three locations for the sign, and I think one appropriate place would be the harbor walkway near the Community Waterfront Heritage Center where the naval instructor trained the sailors. The inscription on the tree, sorry, the inscription on the tree is translated into, "Poland has not yet perished. This soldier will help." So, it was really quite unique to see that inscription and very moving, knowing it was 1942 that this was, this had taken place. So, I would like to receive the correspondence. Move that we received the correspondence, and I don't know if we need to send it to a committee to consider that location, but I would like to recommend that we do accept the permanent plaque from the Consul General and that it be put in the harbor front walkway area.
I think that's a tremendous, Counselor Thomas?
Yeah, I certainly support that. I guess the only addendum that I was going to bring forward was I wondered if it could go to Community Services for some discussion of the location because, you know, one of the things that occurred to me is the Training Center was right across the street from the Legion, and it would certainly be an appropriate place as well for the plaque. So, I just wondered if we could, if we could maybe have a friendly amendment just to have Community Services look at the potential locations and bring recommendation back.
I'm fine with that. However, I would like to see it in a very visible spot, that the public would see it.
I do, yeah, I agree. Are you asking for an amendment to the motion?
Just a friendly amendment, yeah.
Amendment?
I'm fine, then it goes to committee.
Okay. All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. I think it's an excellent suggestion. So, we're down to reports, and our first report is from the Fire Chief. And it is report number CR 18104. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. First of all, I would like for the people at home to mention the fact, the report we just heard from started from the Chamber of Commerce coming to council and asking for somebody to come in and have a look at the fire service in On Sound. I'd like to comment on Andy and his crew, how easy they were to work with. I think they came in and they did a very good job. They talked to members of the public, they talked to business owners, they talked to our staff, they talked to city all staff and firefighters. So, I think they, they covered all the bases that they could possibly cover, and so I give them credit for that, so. So, the recommendation that I'm asking for council, that in consideration of staff reports, CR 18-104, respecting the fire service assessment completed by KCB Incorporated, City Council directs the City Manager and Fire Chief to make best efforts to implement the recommendations contained in the KCB Incorporated assessment. And I will just add a note to that. Due to the limited amount of time for council to read this report and develop questions relating to information received and time for public response to this report, we suggest that this vote may be put off till August 13th meeting. Again, that is an option for you to consider. The recommendation is the first part that we would like, and the option is the second part, if you would like more time to dig into this and ask questions.
Okay. Counselor O'Leary?
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy to move forward with the recommendation. I won't move it at this point. I'll see what the rest of council thinks. But, you know, we've been through service review already, and we all found that during service review, that the number one priority for our taxpayers is to do something with our emergency services cost. So, there's nothing, there's no surprises in this. There's nothing that we can go back and talk to taxpayers about. This, this is a recommendation that should go forward, whether it go tonight or two weeks from now, doesn't matter to me.
Counselor Lemon?
Well, this is sort of like a merry-go-round. We've been getting to this point for a number of years. The fact is, is the current service sustainable? No. If increases in wages continue at the present rate, the city will be filing for bankruptcy, I think. So, I think we should go ahead with it. I think the reduction, for instance, of men on the floor from five to four would have a huge difference. And the one thing I think we would approach that in a very humane way, using attrition when people retire, just not replacing them. But first, we need to get in place the ability to go to four, and I think that's a huge thing. I believe that we have to do things differently. It's not the old days. It's costing a huge amount of money. Emergency services, I don't know, but close to 50% of our budget, I think. It's humongous, and we have to contain the cost. I'm not suggesting we reduce cost or wait the hourly rate. I'm suggesting we just have less people taking home that much money.
Thank you. Did you put a motion on the floor, Counselor O'Leary?
I would move that recommendation, yes.
This, this one that's in the report?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Greg?
Well, I was going to move recommendation one, and I see no problem with this coming back to council August 13th as a report. It was an excellent report we got tonight, but in three and a half years at times, and I think this is a good example, there is no harm in having a couple of weeks to digest the information. There is not a rush that this vote has to be made tonight, and I think the Chief expressed that well. So, the motion as is, I won't support, but I was going to move it separately, one and two.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Through you acting mayor, I just want to confirm what the actual motion is. The Chief has suggested the motion that's listed up on the screen, which is slightly different from the one in the report.
I think the motion is, I don't think the motion is the one that's on the screen. I believe it is.
Would you like me to just read it out again for clarity?
Please read it out.
City Council directs the City Manager and Fire Chief to make best efforts to implement the recommendations contained in the KCB Inc. assessment report.
Okay. Is that the motion you're moving, Counselor O'Leary?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We all, yes, Counselor Thomas?
Well, I'd certainly support moving that over to August the 13th. It is a dense, dense report filled with information. Now, we've had lots of information over the years, but, you know, I would agree with Counselor Greg that two more weeks is not going to make a big difference in terms of what the decision is, but it will give a better chance to completely digest what's contained in the report and, and make an informed decision.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Kepke?
It just seems, I'm certainly in favor of voting on it now. Excuse me. It seemed like a lot of people had questions tonight that were answered, that were in the report, and I don't know what another two weeks is going to do to that, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Lemon?
You know, we've been battering around the problem of fire costs for many, many years. Here is a comprehensive, well-done report with all the information. I don't need another two weeks to study. We know we want the saving, period, end of story. We know our ratepayers want the saving. We can't afford the route we're going.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. With this new recommendation, would that also be taking a look at the best efforts to implement some of those efficiencies as well, recommendations?
Through, through your worship, I would say yes. And again, Andy did touch on, a lot of these things that he mentioned are already in process, okay, or have already been talked about. So, again, we can certainly bring them up again, but an awful lot of the stuff, yes, is in motions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That motion carries. Okay, thank you, Chief. Good luck. Okay. We are moving on to report CPR 18103, Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of the 2018 budget process, council approved undertaking a pay equity review for the non-union pay group. The goal of the review would result in presentation of an adjusted pay grid that achieves external, internal, and statutory pay equity as legislated by the province. The recommendation tonight is that council approve the amended non-union pay grid as presented for a total cost of $76,450. The approved budget for this expected, for this was expected to cost $75,000.
Okay, Counselor Thomas?
I'd move that recommendation.
Okay. We give, we just give Counselor McMahon a man an opportunity here to come back to council. Nice to have you back.
Nice to be back.
So, we are on the implementing, implementing the salary grid. Are there any comments? Any questions or comments? I'll call the question, then. All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. Report CS 18 from the Community Pioneer Planner, sorry. Do you think I need?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Wright.
Closer to me, Community Planner?
This is an application by Walter Fady for lands at 1,006th Street East for the expansion of McLean Engineering. So, this is a 10-acre site. It has 200 meters of frontage on both 6th Street East as well as 7th Street East. The proposal is a 15,000-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing building, a future 8,600-square-foot detached storage shed, an expanded parking lot. There would be 112 parking spaces as well as four barrier-free, a new entrance from the frontage on 7th Street there on the north side, as well as resurfacing the existing gravel parking area, as well as a creation of stormwater management pond and bio swales. In terms of the provincial policy statement, the expansion of an existing employment use on full services within an urban area supports the economic well-being and overall direction of the PPS for long-term sustainable growth. Our official plan designates the property employment and supports the retention and expansion of existing employment uses. The development with the conditions recommended is consistent with our official plan. The zoning for this site is general industrial, and it permits manufacturing, storage, as well as other uses. A detailed zoning conformity check shows that the site meets the required site and The parking on site, there are 77 required, and there are 114 provided, including four that are barrier-free, as well as three loading on loading spaces. There are conditions about the four barrier-free spaces just to ensure that they meet the city standard in terms of standard spaces as well as van-accessible spaces. Any future loading space with the proposed detached storage building on the east side would be proximate to future residential area, and we're just saying that there should be a condition in the site plan agreement that would require, when that's built, for it to be screened from that area. The new entrance proposed from 7th Street is to be done in reclaimed asphalt, and that's generally fine, except the throat of that entrance, which would be on the municipal property. There is a condition asking for it to be heavy-duty asphalt. 6th Street is a future collector road. A three-meter road widening is required in this area. There are existing drive aisles and fences in this area, and you'll see a condition in site plan approval that allows this widening to come to us as part of the site plan agreement, not holding up a building permit here. We want to keep this development moving, and we're also requesting council tonight approve an encroachment agreement for those features, a six-month encroachment agreement. So, also in terms of that 6th Street, there is no sidewalk on the north side of 6th Street, and a capital contribution is recommended as a condition for a future sidewalk or multipurpose lane on 6th Street. Engineering and gray sawbowl are both recommending some changes to the stormwater and grading and drainage plan, which can be achieved, and those changes have been shared with the engineering consultant for the owner. So, the recommendation is that council would approve the site plan by Walter Fady, last revised June 12th, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix A, that you would authorize a bylaw allowing the mayor and clerk to execute the site plan agreement, and that you would authorize a six-month encroachment agreement for those existing features on 6th Street, and request staff to bring forward a bylaw to allow the mayor and clerk to authorize that agreement as well.
Thank you, Ms. Calder. We've got an opportunity here to speak to a very good news story. I'd like to- I'd like to note that this was just presented to staff as in the report, June 13th, so it's moved right along. About a year ago, several councillors got an opportunity to attend McLean Engineering and learn and expand their knowledge on that business, so an excellent report, an opportunity here in our community. Anybody wish to speak to that tonight? Councilor Kepke?
Thank you very much. You're right, it certainly is a good news story, and we're happy to see this business expanding. So I'm certainly happy to move the recommendation in the report.
Any further discussion? Peter?
Yeah, I'm a little puzzled about this sidewalk requirement. There's no sidewalk on the other part of that street, just Sixth Street from Ninth Avenue in easterly direction.
Through you, your worship, there was a sidewalk built on the east side of Ninth Avenue. I'm trying to think if there's a sidewalk on the south side of Sixth Street, but it is a future collector road. It will connect right through the Millman Lands to the Red Hawk Lands. It is, it's going to be a very important road. Sixth Street is a county road, and they are recommending both a widening as well as a contribution to either future sidewalk, because there isn't one there, and we wouldn't build the sidewalk until the future time when the road is rebuilt. So the capital contribution would be held in the reserve to be used at a future time.
But only for sidewalk on that street. I just, well, we need the jobs. I really, not worrying about the sidewalk, but I will support.
Anyone else? Call the question, then, all those in favor. That carries, thank you. And the next one is yours, too.
Thank you. In the same neighborhood, RJ Burnside Engineering have made an application for site plan approval for Belfour Property Restoration. It's a one-acre site on the west side of 20th Avenue East. If you're familiar with that neighborhood, it's across the street from the Miller Paving Site. The proposal is 7,650 square-foot addition to an existing 1,400-square-foot building, so it's, you know, seven times the existing building. So they'll be adding storage warehouse, office, as well as shop. They're adding two new barrier-free parking stalls with an expanded parking lot, a loading area, as well as stormwater, and additional landscaping. A number of supporting documents were submitted with the application, and again, in terms of the PPS, the expansion of an existing business on full service, services in an urban municipality certainly supports the economic development growth and represents sustainable, long-term growth. Again, the OP designates the property employment and permits a range of uses, and the proposal conforms with the OP. The zoning zones the property M2 or heavy industrial, and the uses are permitted, and a detailed zoning conformity check indicates the site meets all the required site and building requirements, except it's two parking spaces short. There's 13, and there should be 15. You'll see on the site plan on the screen, there's lots of area within the hard-surface parking area to accommodate those two spaces, so that shouldn't be a problem. A number of large, mature trees will be retained, and also there'll be six trees planted as part of the proposal. There's two barrier-free parking spaces proximate to the building, abutting an existing asphalt driveway, and there is a condition recommending the use of bollards to protect those spaces as everything's at grade. There's not a curb face, or a curb there that would prevent cars from entering onto that walkway. The recommendation is, then, that council approve the site plan by RJ Burnside, that you would pass a bylaw authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the site plan agreement, and that upon registration of the new agreement, this site was originally developed, I think, in 1988 under a site plan agreement, and a certificate of compliance issued, so that that agreement would be removed from title.
Thank you very much. Would someone move the recommendation, please? Thank you, Councilor Lemon. Questions? Councilor McMahon, a minute.
Not a question, your worship, just a comment. So the last report was a 15,000-square-foot addition to an industrial building. This one's a 7,500 square, just 6,700 square-foot building addition. I just think it's important to highlight, again, not only is that construction dollars in the community, it is expansion of businesses in the community, expansion of the tax base, expansion of jobs. So it's a really good news, and I would also just highlight, sometimes we do talk about bureaucratic holdups, if we'll call them that, with some developments. This one was also June 11th, and is here for approval in mid-July, so I think, again, that's a pretty good timeline, so I just wanted to highlight that.
That's very nice, thank you. Any questions or further comments? All those in favor, then? That motion carries, thank you. The next one is the, again, Pam, the Community Planner Township of Georgian Bluffs draft.
Thank you. The Township of Georgian Bluffs is currently undertaking a new zoning bylaw, and through Community Services Committee, council had endorsed previous comments that were shared with the county and the township. On July 6th, the city received the notice of an upcoming public meeting that would be August 1st, and due to the timing of the meeting, our committee and council schedule, we're bringing the report directly to council as opposed to through committee. The analysis has focused mostly on the policy framework provided, provided in city policy CS 81, which is the policy and procedure respecting planning notices. So our comments focus on things like servicing, stormwater management, long-term environmental impact, traffic, et cetera. The structure of this report is very much like the previous report with a comment, and then an update to that comment based on the new draft, Draft 3 of the Georgian Bluff zoning bylaw. So there's 13 pages of comments, so I'll just highlight a few things for you, and one of the comments relates to the previous Georgian Shore subdivision. The city had appealed that, and there were special provisions in the Ontario Municipal Board decision from 2011, and we're just asking that those special provisions be carefully carried forward in the new zoning bylaw. A few weeks ago, council had considered comments on behalf of the city with respect to a zoning bylaw amendment in the Sunset Strip area. The zoning bylaw draft includes that zoning, and we're just asking that they let that process run its course, and before they presume that that zoning would be in place for that lot. There are policies in the new zoning bylaw for Georgian Bluffs with respect to special events and major special events, which could be between 1,000 and 3,000 people. It would now be permitted in all residential zones. It could happen two times a year, up to 10 days, and they've removed from the zoning bylaw the criteria with respect to traffic, servicing, et cetera. And we're just suggesting that noise and traffic and servicing impacts on the neighboring properties as well as the neighboring municipality may be a valid consideration, and they're moving to maybe a special event or a major special event permit, and input from neighbors and neighboring municipalities may be advisable. The minimum lot area in the agricultural zone was 40 hectares or 100 acres. It's now 20, and as per the draft county official plan, we're suggesting they should move that back to 40 hectares or 100 acres. Starting on page nine, there's several comments with respect to zone provisions and lot size. Sometimes they contemplate partial or full services. Often they'll leave off full services, and we just think particularly, you know, in the East Linton-Cobble Beach area, it should provide an option for full services. In terms of the Sunset Strip area, they have added certain uses to that C4 zone that may not be consistent with the county official plan with respect to the type of uses for that Springmount area, things like assembly hall, banquet halls, that wouldn't be considered dry in nature. So we're asking them to review those permitted uses with respect to the city's comment and the county's draft recolor gray. So the recommendation is that you would receive the report and direct staff to send the report to the township and the county as our preliminary comments on Draft 3 of the zoning bylaw, and request notice of future drafts, public meetings, or decisions of the township with respect to the comprehensive zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you very much, Pam, and just a quick question. The public meeting that's coming up, August 8th, is Margaret presenting at that? Is that, are our concerns going to be presented?
I don't think staff would do a formal presentation. Staff have certainly been talking back and forth, but we would send the report and certainly be available for staff or the consultant to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So could I have a mover of this, to move this recommendation, please? Councilor Dodd?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wright, I will move that recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from anyone? Okay, all those in favor? That carries, and thank you very much for your work on this, your staff's work on this for your department, thank you. We're down to 12F, Report CF from the Director of Community Services, Reagreement of Purchase and Sale.
Thank you. The city had received an offer for lands listed in the industrial park. They are located on the south side of 23rd Street East. They have 55 meters of frontage and 2.36 acres in land area. There's a prescribed process for land sales under our bylaw. We have to give notice, which was done. The lands have to be declared surplus, and that was done. There is a survey, and the lands were listed at a price of $69,000, and no further appraisal was required. At your closed meeting on June 25th, council considered an offer and provided direction that we sign back the offer, accepting the price, subject to legal review and compliance with our land sale bylaw. We did sign it back, and I can tell council that the buyer has now waived their conditions, which is a little bit ahead of schedule, so that's terrific news. A legal review of the offer has been completed, and that received a checkmark as well. So the offer includes council's standard buyback clause after 18 months, but not later than the third anniversary. The offer is for $50,000, and it will close on September 7th. So the recommendation is that council would approve a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents necessary to finalize this land sale.
Okay, we've had a lot of good news reports tonight. Who moved that? Councilor Gregg? Any comments or questions on this? All those in favor? That motion carries, thank you. Report 12G, this is the Acting Emergency Management Coordinator.
Through you, Madam Chair. The recommendation to this report is that council approve adding Heidi Jenin as the Community Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Owen Sound to the Appointed Officers bylaw. This will meet the requirements under Ontario Regulation 380, Section 10 of the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act, stating that every municipality shall designate an employee of the municipality or a member of council to, as its emergency management program coordinator. There are no financial implications associated with this report. It is basically a housekeeping item.
Okay, is there a mover for this? Councilor Kepke, thank you. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? That carries, thank you. Consent agenda, Mr. Dodd.
Okay, through you, Acting Mayor. On the consent agenda this evening are two sets of minutes for receipt from the DIA Board. Several businesses have received final approval, including Albright Trucking at 248 Ninth Avenue East, First Avenue S Bed and Breakfast at 1,000 First Avenue West, Lorien K.E. Caswell Designs, a home occupation at 300 Second Avenue East, Mudtown Station Brewery and Restaurant at 1198 First Avenue East, and a Hucker and Pedler license for the 2018 Emancipation Festival. Lastly, there's correspondence received, which is presented for the information of council. A full listing is available at 13C.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wright. Move myself, that city council receives items 13A to 13C on the consent agenda, dated July 23rd, 2018.
All those in favor? That motion carries. So there are some minutes there. The DIA Board, Councilor Kepke?
Thank you. First, in the May 30th DIA minutes, I wanted to just highlight a few points. We received a deputation from Jackie Furtner, and Jackie is a member of the DIA Board, just newly elected as the vice chair, and she gave her own time to go to the OBIAA conference and gave us some highlights from some of the presentations there. The highlights being that the downtown needs to generate positive attitudes about the community. People need to be downtown to draw businesses to the area. Beautification is important and should be an investment that is shared by the whole community, and that we need to find a way to make downtown Owen Sound a place that people want to come to. So we, council did receive a bit of that presentation as well as the Economic Development Committee. There was some discussion about the Summer Street Fest and the hottest street sale, as well as the First Friday in the downtown area, highlighting the 150 hours of foot patrol was taken by the Owen Sound Police Services in the downtown. There was a status update by our Director of Community Services regarding the downtown revitalization project, and she presented a spreadsheet and update, updated the board on the status of the action items of that project. There was, and I will give you a bit more detail of this in the next set of minutes, but there was a discussion regarding a presentation, a proposal, I should say, on complimentary parking and establishing the Owen Sound Downtown Improvement Area with the maintenance agreement and the basis of the complimentary parking proposal being presented by the city. The board was represent, board requested that the city manager bring a report to the June meeting regarding the strategy that will be conducted to present this proposal and timing and membership and implementation, et cetera. From the June minutes, there was police services reported 124 hours of foot patrol in the downtown area, as well as discussion regarding the safe exchange zone that was created in the small parking lot next to the police station. So this is where, if people are buying or selling on Kijiji, et cetera, they can go to a safe zone and exchange their items there, as opposed to maybe something that's not so safe. There was discussion about reaching out to the Canadian Mental Health Association and inviting their staff to attend a board meeting of the DIA to discuss strategies and dealing with any downtown issues that might arise. The downtown parking proposal, the city manager did present a report respecting complimentary parking and support from the city of the DIA. Recommendation will be made to council to increase the direct support for maintenance in the downtown core by increasing the budget beginning in 2019. There was a motion approved that a public open house would take place, I believe it's August 30th, and 5:30 PM, and I think it's going to be at the Bay Shore, and that will be for anyone wanting to comment on complimentary parking. The theory is to establish complimentary parking, two-hour complimentary parking, where there is currently two-hour parking, as well as in all the metered areas, and nine-hour complimentary parking in the lots. So that's being brought forward for discussion in an open public meeting. Other than that, the only other comment I would have is that the DIA budget in 2019 will then reflect the changes in the restructuring of the DIA to be supported by city staff, while the DIA Board of Management would still remain as an autonomous board. And that's all I have on this. Councilor Leary has anything to add to those minutes?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments regarding, yeah, Councilor McMahon, a minute.
Thank you, worship. The minutes, just about the downtown parking, complimentary parking, they were just a little vague on the point. I support the proposal. Of course, the devil's always been in the details with this issue financially. How is it suggested that it would be supported financially? That was, that's my question.
The DIA levy would still be collected, and that's what would support, as well as, I believe there's a small budget amount that the city would put in to sustain the maintenance, et cetera.
And that would, all that information would be at the August 30th meeting you mentioned?
Yes, it will be. And there'll be presentations by city staff as well as the DIA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Okay, moving on. I think we, and all of that, we have committee minutes for approval. There were two sets. 14A is the minutes of Community Services. Counselor McManaman?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wright. Meeting of July 18th, a few matters we dealt with. The first one is the retail and commercial policy review, final report. Just to remind people, the purpose of the review is to assess the existing commercial policies and current retail trends, examine the city's commercial structure, goals, objectives related to commercial policy, and provide recommendations for the upcoming official plan review. I don't intend to go through this whole plan. It's, as you can imagine, I think it was a 70-page document. I would encourage people that are interested in this, they can go online and look at the Community Services minutes. They can contact City Hall or any member of council and we can provide that to them. I'd say probably the biggest change, other than some policy language, to strengthen our, to strengthen the document, was around the retail impact studies. Trying to encourage new commercial facilities without hurting existing commercial, particularly in the downtown. And so it's recommending criteria be established that triggers the need for this retail impact study based on the minimum or maximum gross floor area of any new commercial property. But again, I would encourage anyone who's interested to go online or contact staff or council and we can provide that to you. We had the Doors Open wrap-up. We had over 3,000 visits for Doors Open. Probably the biggest highlight was a tour by Ally Boltman through Greenwood Cemetery that highlighted the role of famous women in Owen Sound's history and a promise, I guess you'd, of a donation to build a monument in Greenwood Cemetery on that important factor. So that was sort of an exciting part of Doors Open. And also recommending here that we, it had a small deficit of $400. Thank you to our sponsors, Berry's Construction, Georgian Shores Marina, MHBC Planning, and Sprucedale Agri Mart. And it also is asking council, committee, recommending council authorize Doors Open be, we participate next year on June 1st and 2nd in 2019. There's a facade and structural improvement application for 217 Eighth Street West. We did deal with one for this building in June. This is another facade of that building and the grant, suggesting we modify the grant from June to make this a double facade for this property, this historic property, I should say. The last item, not the best news, concession at the Julie MacArthur Regional Rec. Center. The Buff Bistro has provided notice in writing that their last day of operation will be August 31st of this year. People will recall that we went through the background committee of the different ways we tried to get a proponent to operate that facility. We went through three requests for proposals. Then council authorized staff to negotiate directly with potential individuals and businesses. It is suggested that, or committee suggesting to council that we operate, do that again this time, to not put out a request for proposal, but to undertake direct negotiations with individuals or business who may be interested in operating that concession. Any revenue generated from the concession goes back to capital improvements for the facility. And anyone who is interested in that or would like more information, please contact Community Services and we can have that discussion. With that, Your Worship, those are the minutes and I would move those, move those recommendations, move those minutes for adoption.
Okay, any questions of Counselor McManaman? Yep, Counselor.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Wright, just, or Deputy Mayor Wright. Quite innate. I just wondered, was there any discussion, there was a double facade grant in there and the house for it is considerably up the street from the corner. So I was just wondering, was there any discussion on that not qualifying or why it qualified? Because it's not really visible to the street.
I will look to staff, but I think the pictures we saw, there is a large laneway there and it was felt that this building was visible and it was, you know, I suppose it's subjective, whether you think it should be a double facade or not. I think the main rationale was this is a designated home, I believe, an historic designated home. And so if we can help the preservation of this building, being somewhat encouraging with the definition, I guess I'd say. But it certainly is visible from the street, both facades. Committee felt that it met the criteria.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of receipt of the minutes? Thank you. It's carried. Move on to the Counselor Gregg. Do you have the operation committees? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Thanks Acting Mayor Wright. We began with a public meeting. John Slocum of GM Blue Plan did a presentation on the 10th Street Bridge replacement. Members of the public and committee members had questions around pedestrians crossing the river, traffic counts, and bridge design. The recommended configuration is status quo for now. Just thought I'd throw that in there. There is some crossing guard changes and pedestrian crossing treatments on Eighth Street West, Fourth Avenue West, and Alpha Street near Eighth Avenue West. There's a couple of parking changes made on First Avenue East by Mudtown Station. There's a loading dock for the beer store and tractor-trailers were unable to back into the dock with all the parked vehicles around the new brew pub. Also at the entrance of Harrison Park, there's two new curbs put in and they'll be signed and installed to let people know there's no parking. Committee has decided to postpone any changes to the operation of the traffic signals on 10th Street and Second Avenue East until after the bridge is replaced. Dennis Kafalas will meet with the DIA to develop a destination signage program to focus attention on the downtown. Transit update, committee has reduced the cost of the student passes for $2.35 a month from September 2018 to June 2019 and to further reassess the discount program in 2019. And that, with that, I move approval of those minutes.
Okay, any questions of Counselor O'Leary? Counselor Lemon?
Yes, Your Worship. One of the things, the pedestrians that currently cross 10th Street, have we considered the possibility of a pedestrian bridge north of 10th Street and south of where the Chee Chee Mans are?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Itchy.
Through you, your city manager.
Through you, Your Worship. We've been approached by a group that certainly is known to council and citizens and we're looking at that, but at this time, there is, you know, as staff, we're concentrating on the 10th Street Bridge. But certainly, we have a group that is willing to work with us in the future on a footbridge. I think it'd be a wonderful idea. But the complexities around the 10th Street Bridge and the construction of that and the zone all being together, I don't think in, personally, and I will defer to our engineers when we get there, we want to stick our attention to that. Work with this group perhaps to do a walking bridge in the future, absolutely.
Well, I really feel the time for that bridge is before the 10th Street Bridge, not after. Because one of the concerns I have is that somebody who lives, say, north of the 10th Street Bridge and say wants to go somewhere downtown that's north of 10th Street, they're going to have to go up to Ninth Street. It adds three, four blocks to a person's trip. And I really think, I think the two can go on at the same time. I'd prefer a Bailey Bridge, to be honest, at 11th Street, but I didn't say that tonight, but I still think that might be practical. But I really think, I'm very, very concerned that when we close off the 10th Street Bridge, as I said earlier tonight, we're losing over 50% of our capacity. And that is going to make, like, we're going to have to have some system for buses. One of the things I'm going to be suggesting, and I'll say it right now, is what we need during the bridge close down is a phone number that people can call, it's updated constantly, as to how late the buses are running. Because when something else was closed off, I can remember being in a certain store at Ninth, or Eighth Street and Second Avenue East with a fellow councillor and he saw how long I had to wait for the bus because it was running late. When the weather's lousy in the wintertime, that's a awfully long wait. I think you could have some kind of a common number. Not everybody has iPads, not everybody goes on the computer. And I think a simple phone number, I could call, say, 376 Bus, or Buses or something, whatever. And I could find out the buses are running five minutes late, 10 minutes late, half an hour late. If you let people know that, they're not going to be as angry as if they go to the bus stop at the time that the bus theoretically passes there and wait for 20 minutes. That can be very frustrating.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, Acting Mayor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Wright. Just as a general idea, I know during this report when we had the public meeting, there were some ideas of some cost or budget of what this would be. How much would that be? Do we have an idea, a general idea of what the overall cost for the bridge would be?
10th Street Bridge?
Yes.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, it was $7.5 million.
And we're receiving $3 million in grant funding, correct?
That is correct.
Now, how much would it cost to build a pedestrian bridge? We don't own the land, the waterbed, we don't own the harbour, so we really wouldn't be able to really get too involved in that, right? It's a great idea, I agree with you, Peter, I think, sorry, Councilwoman, I think it's a great idea. I think we do need to have that at some point. But obviously, that's going to be a huge, a huge budget and a huge expense to the city and the taxpayers as it is currently. I don't know if I could justify, at this point, putting out more money into a pedestrian bridge.
Well, if a community group got behind it and reduced the cost, and I think that could happen. I think this community has a history of working together when we're facing a problem. And not having pedestrian access to Ninth Street is going to be a problem.
Maybe somebody will set up a water taxi business, Peter, you never know. Counselor Gregg?
Actually, in the wintertime, we'll turn the Chee Chee on around on its side and drive in one side and out the other.
Counselor Gregg?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wright. We had, during that 10th Street Bridge design, some discussion on one of the concepts, which was Design Concept 7, and it had to do with timing considerations. And the law, as it is right now, is July 1 to September 15 for in-water work. I'm wondering, with the support of council, I think what we should be doing is starting very quickly on this. We should be sending a letter to the Ministry of Oceans and Fisheries and we CC our Member of Parliament, Mr. Miller, on it. And this is something that is indeed the exact reason you elect these officials and you have them there, is to roll up their shirt sleeves and get to work early on this. There will be an election next year and, undetermined where it will go, but this is something, I think, that the sooner you get cracking on it, get that information there, get a Member of Parliament to try to progress that and extend that window for us is absolute, is an absolute necessity. You know, the worst they can say is no, but you're here to do hard work and he's there to do hard work and lobby on our behalf. And this is a very unique scenario where this bridge is going in. And I don't think we should be held to some, you know, universal, everyone's the same treatment here. This is, this has the potential to be very disruptive to our downtown, to our transit, to a great many things, to our fire services. So I think we should be constructing a letter requesting that this be considered and that window be extended for the in-water work.
City Manager, Mr. Itchy?
Thank you, Your Worship. At a staff level, Mr. Kafalas tells me we've already had those conversations and staff with the ministries are assisting us on how we would approach this. So certainly, when we feel a letter is required preemptively, we absolutely would be coming forward with that. But at the staff level, we've already started those discussions.
And I know a lot of planning is going into this from our committee meetings and from staff. There's a lot of planning. Okay, thank you. We did vote on, okay, call the question, all those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. There are no postpone, no down. We are down to other business. Counselor Lemon?
Yes, Your Worship. Talking about writing our MPP, an MP, this is an issue we should be. Currently, the City of Owen Sound has a gas price which is 10 cents a litre more than in Meaford, Collingwood, Perry. And also to the south of us, the same thing. We're one of the highest, if not the highest, price for gas in Ontario. It's been that way now for about six weeks. This doesn't affect the city budget because we pay, I believe, a rack price in Toronto. But it does affect our ratepayers. 10 cents a litre. That's 44 cents a gallon, for those of us that still remember what a gallon is. And I believe that the oil companies are once again victimizing this area. They did it a number of years ago and we wrote a letter to our MP and MPP and lo and behold, the price became rational again with the rest of Ontario. But why would gas in Owen Sound cost 10 cents a litre more than Meaford? Now, we're closer to the refinery than Meaford is. So if anything, it shouldn't be the other way around, not that much though. But I am going to make a motion that we send a letter to our MP and to our MPP both saying, look at the gas prices in our area and it's unfair that the ratepayers of Owen Sound are putting a bill of an extra 10 cents a litre on the cost of gasoline. I'm all for conservation, but 10 cents a litre is hurting a lot of people. And obviously, it's hurting the people with limited incomes who drive to work the most.
Do you want to make that a notice of motion, Peter?
I don't think, does that need to be a notice?
I think it needs to be a notice of motion, according to my clerk.
Why would it need to be a notice of motion when it's requesting a letter? It's not requesting an action, it's not requesting money or anything like that.
It's requesting the use of staff time and this isn't, notice of this motion hasn't been provided on the agenda, so the public hasn't been provided an opportunity to comment on this topic.
Yeah, well, I think most of the public is going to be on our side. In that case, I will give a notice of motion that I intend to cause, to move or have, to have moved.
Write it down, Peter. We'll call on you at the right time.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dodd?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wright. So I have two additional pieces of business today. One, I know we were dealing with a staff-delegated site plan for Bellwick Packaging. I was just wondering if we could get a little bit of an update on that from the Director of Community Services.
Thank you. Through you, Acting Mayor Wright. Bellwick has also applied for site plan approval for about an 805 square metre addition to their plant on Eighth Street East. It's a 4,200 square metre plant. Because of the size of the addition in the existing building, staff are able to approve that. We circulate it to council. It's a staff-delegated site plan approval and I think it's, I haven't seen or signed the report yet, but I know it's close to being ready. So that would bring to three the number of industrial expansions, certainly the first time in a lot of years that I can remember anything like that.
Great. Thank you for that update, Ms. Coulter. So I just wanted to make a quick little comment about that. So the two, we've already approved two site plans today. The Bellefort Construction, which was a building addition of 7,656 square feet. McLean Engineering, which was an addition to 14,951 square feet. And then, together with this one, which was for Bellwick, was 8,665 square feet. Together adding, that is 31,272 square feet of industrial space being with that expansion. So I think that together, that means new jobs, new investment, new assessment, which is growth, which is tremendously good news for a community. I think it also kind of opens up that Owen Sound is open for business. We are seeing this through the We are seeing this through the expansion of our three of our employers. For those of you haven't, didn't know, in the 2018 tax year, we did lower our industrial and commercial tax ratios to be more competitive on that, and also, we've had an increased economic development with Gray County. So I think all those things go together. We've been able to see some of this growth that we are seeing on some of this infill lot, which is absolutely amazing. I would also like to take this time to say thank you to the city's development team and all their agency partners. The timeline to circulate these applications, get comments, write reports, and get to council has been very fast. We know that Belfour was done in 19 days, McLean was done in a month and a half, and then with Bellwick Packaging, we know that's been done through staff currently and is on its way to be done. So I just wanted to really bring out that one. That's great to hear about Bellwick moving forward as it is, and overall, it's a great story. You know that there's 31,272 square footage of industrial space that'll be added. Second one I wanted to, I wanted to bring up, I know it's not as a happy one, I want to send condolences to Brian Gibbons' family. Brian Gibbons was a former committee member, sat on Parks and Recreation, and he passed away rather recently, and I just thought, as him doing his service to what he had done for the city and in the years that he'd been on committee, that we owed him to, say, send his family some condolences, so those would be my two. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas, you had some.
Thank you. Something Counselor O'Leary said jogged my memory, and I forgot to notify you at the start, just a very quick thing. I have, with all the nice weather, I've been running in the mornings lately because it's too darn hot in the afternoon, and I've been through Harrison Park on the newly paved trail three mornings a week for the past month, and I got to tell you that on almost every one of those mornings, someone has stopped me to tell me how much they appreciate that paving job. So kudos to staff, it looks great, feels great, it's really a pleasure to run on, so way to go, and people really, really do appreciate it.
Good, thank you. I just have one thing, and that is that we have 30 Japanese students visiting our city for the next two weeks, and they are in, they came yesterday, I believe, they arrived, and they're here for the next two weeks. So they're young men between the ages of 14 and 17 years of age, so if you meet them on the street, smile at them and say hi. They're very friendly, and we want them to feel welcome in our community. It's very nice. And at this time, I hope that our mayor is enjoying clear sailing, smooth sailing. I hope he's having a good holiday. Counselor O'Leary?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, Noah mentioned Harbor Fest. That first annual Harbor Fest that Brent Fisher and Carla MacArthur put on was just slam dunk.
It was.
Great day. The tug-of-war on the harbor, I stood on the side, and it was just entertaining. People on both sides of the harbor cheering those guys on. I spent the whole day there, the entertainment was great. Little bit of rain, got wet for half an hour or so, but all of the crowd came back, and it was just busting at the seams the whole night, so job well done by staff.
Good, thank you very much. Notice of motion?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wright. Moved by myself at the committee of the whole, rise and report.
All those in favor? That motion carries, thank you. Motion to adopt proceedings?
Thank you.
No notice of motion?
It's next. It's after that one.
No, it's not yet, Peter, I'll call you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wright. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Lemon, that the action taken in committee of the whole, considering public meetings, deputations and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business be confirmed by this council.
Okay, all those in favor? That carries. Now, notices of motion? Counselor Lemon?
Thank you, your Deputy Mayor. I hereby give notice, I will move or cause to be moved, a motion at the next regular meeting of council to request a letter be sent to our MP and MPP, asking for their help in making the oil companies explain their predatory pricing, where one municipality has a much higher rate than the neighboring municipality. And I'll move by myself and date it as of this date. The reason I'm doing this is because we're getting ripped off.
To be polite.
Okay, and Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wright. I feel like I should be putting my hand up when I do this. I hereby give notice that I will move or cause to be moved, a motion at the next regular council meeting, to reinstate the three parking spaces in front of the Sidnum after the construction is completed. Signed this 23rd day of July, 2018.
Okay, thank you. We are down to bylaws, Madam Kirk.
Through Acting Mayor, the bylaws listed for approval on tonight's agenda include the confirmatory bylaw, five bylaws to execute facility use agreements for the ladies provincial fastball championships at Duncan McClellan Ball Park, the emancipation festival at Harrison Park, the dog show at Harrison Park, summer folk at Kelso Beach Park, and rib fest at the Bay Shore parking lot. A bylaw to execute an agreement with Gray County for street sweeping, a bylaw to execute a site plan agreement with CP Wright Ontario Properties respecting property located at 1150 16th Street East. Two bylaws to declare land surplus, one for property on parts of 14th Street East and one for property located at 2125 16th Street East. A bylaw to execute the necessary documents for the sale of lands described as parts two and four, Plan 16R 10530, 23rd Street East, and a bylaw to enact policy FS17 respecting tangible capital assets, thresholds, and valuation.
Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wright. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Lemon, that bylaw numbers 2018-108 to 2018-119 be passed and enacted.
All those in favor? That motion carries, thank you. I declare this meeting adjourned.